Hey, Committee on Finance and Law will come to order. Mr. Roll call, Mr. DeMello.
Present.
Mr. Enos.
Present.
Mr. Fiore is present. The first line item is student activity account for Taunton High School. The amount of fourteen thousand, two hundred fifty-one dollars and forty-four cents.
No movement. I'll second that. I've reviewed it and everything seems great. Thank you. Second.
Okay. Most of the time when it's run up like this, it's prom-related expenses. It looks to be similar to that this time. Any discussion? And all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All those opposed, so voted. Use of facilities. Mrs. Moynihan.
In your packet you will see that it's an update of our use of facilities. And they are for upcoming in April and in June for inside of our buildings, for the auditorium, and also for our parking lot for an event that one of our local organizations is using it for. Again, this is just a normal facility update that we provide you with, and all parties have had filled out the use of facilities form and has been informed that everything has been approved.
Motion to receive in place on file.
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion? Hearing all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so voted. We have bills payable warrant in the amount of one million, one hundred seventy-three thousand, four hundred seventy-two dollars and ninety-three cents.
Motion to approve in the amount stated.
Second.
I need to be recorded as present on the line items for Old Colony History Museum. I'm the assistant treasurer there.
I'll amend my motion to include the exclusions for the Old Colony History Museum for Mr. Fiore.
Second.
All right, so motion made seconded to approve with my waiver of that one particular item. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted. Then the facilities update. Mrs. Moynihan.
I just heard from our operations manager, OPM manager, for the alternative high school. We are finally getting into the final phases, the final weeks of the project. Their doors have been installed. There have been some issues with the installation. I guess a part was not working properly. So they have assured me that things will be done by the end of the month, and all workers will be out of the building, and we can begin getting ready for the summer and then, of course, next school year, bringing back our students from where currently are at Hopewell and back into the alternative high school. So that has been going on. And also, like in our buildings, even though that we did see the less of COVID cases and all, our custodians are continuing to disinfect and clean our buildings normally with our disinfecting guns and everything for protocol, safety protocols as well.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for the good of the order?
No. Do we need to accept a report?
Motion to accept the report from the assistant superintendent.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted. And now, what's your pleasure?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted.
Call the meeting to order. If you could please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, and to the free and to the just.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Mrs. Fagan?
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. I would also like to ask for a moment of silence for Mary J. Pope, the mother-in-law of Mr. Barata. It was his wife's mother. Very large family. His wife's one of nine children, and Mrs. Pope, I guess, was one of eleven. So she leaves a lot of grandchildren. She's a great-grandmother of four great-granddaughters and several nieces and nephews. And our sincerest sympathy goes out to your family, Mr. Barata. May God have mercy on all of you, and I'm sure she's in a good place. So a moment of silence, please, for Mrs. Pope. Thank you. Roll call. Mr. Pulowski?
Present.
Mr. Enos?
Present.
Mr. Fiore?
Present.
Mrs. Fagan's present. Mr. Viera?
Present.
Mr. George?
Present.
Mr. Laura?
Present.
Chairman Mellow?
Present.
Mr. Mellow, I'm sorry.
Present.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Present. Thank you. Approval of the minutes of March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Can I get a motion?
No move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. There is no student advisory committee report this evening. Public input, Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. In accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty-nine, Section twenty-three C, we kindly request that individuals wishing to provide public input sign up in advance. A copy of the regulation and guidelines will be provided upon signup. And individuals will be asked to state their name and address for the record. The amount of time each registered individual will have to speak will be determined by the number of people who sign the register, and will be announced prior to the start of the public input portion of the meeting. Do we have any public input, Ms. Benz?
There is no public input.
No public input, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we go to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So in your packet, you have two updates in my superintendent's report, and I also have a superintendent's update that I wanted to make you aware of as my third item. So the first item I'd like to share with the committee, and I believe we recognized this group during our special recognition night. So Taunton High School was one of three comprehensive high schools that participated in a pro-star competition that involved thirteen high schools, consisting of ten vocational schools and, again, three comprehensive high school. I am proud to announce that Taunton High School's culinary arts and management teams received top scores at the Massachusetts Pro Star Invitational. The Massachusetts Pro Star Invitational was held on Tuesday, March twenty-second, at Gillette Stadium in Foxborough. Students competed in culinary arts and management competitions judged by industry professionals. Thirteen high school students competed, including five students on the culinary team and four students on two different management teams. They were joined by their coaches, management team coach Sarah Gibson and culinary team coach Chef Lee Howlett, and assistant from Chef John Collins. The culinary team cooked a three-course meal. In a one-hour, in a one-hour competition, the panel had to prepare a meal that was judged by an elite culinary team of judges. They were charged with developing an appetizer, a main course, and a dessert. Taunton High School's culinary team won first place out of thirteen teams and qualified for the national competition in early May, which will be held in Washington, D.C. Members of this year's culinary art team were seniors Malaya Turin, Emily Robinson, Toren Hodgson, and Ethan Ross, and manager Nolan Langley. In addition to the team award, Nolan Langley also received an award for the best manager, and Robinson received accolades for the best appetizer of the day. Taunton High School's management team created a complete restaurant concept, including a design, a business proposal, menu, and a marketing plan, which they presented to a panel of elite industry judges. Juniors Jonathan Henderson, Tatum Domon, Israel Cruz, and Kaya Leonard received second place out of the five management teams for their innovative digital restaurant concept, Oh Atmosphere. John Henderson also received a Best Creative Marketing Award for his chef-lebrity marketing tactic. This is the second time that our culinary arts team has been crowned state champions. Our management team, they have been state champs three times. So each year, the Pro Star Invitational gives our students the opportunity to showcase their skills in front of panels of industry experts, and they are greatly looked, and they greatly look forward to this event. Our entire school community is extremely proud of all our Taunton High School students who participated in this year's Pro Star Invitational competition, that they have performed exceptionally well. And I believe it was noted during special recognition that these students and staff are arriving as early as 5:30 each morning to prepare for the competition and staying as late as 10 o'clock in the evening. So the kids and the staff are to be commended for the outstanding effort, and as you know, winning is contagious. We're doing it on the football field, on the baseball field, the softball field, and now we're doing it in our culinary arts department. So we're very, very proud of our students. Next, I'd just like to point out that the Director of Student Services and Transportation, Kathleen Perry, she's set to retire at the conclusion of the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year, following nearly thirty-year career with the Taunton Public Schools. I would like to formally announce that the Director of Student Services and Transportation, Kathy Perry, will retire at the conclusion of the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year, following nearly a thirty-year career with the Taunton Public Schools. For almost thirty years, Kathy Perry has positively impacted thousands of students' lives over the course of the years. She has always been an advocate for our students and a leader among staff and faculty. Kathy joined the Taunton Public Schools in nineteen ninety-six as a reading teacher at the elementary and middle school levels. It was during this time that I first met Kathy, when she was a reading teacher at the Kohanet Middle School, and I was serving as an interim assistant principal. Kathy has embraced a wide array of building, grade, and administrative assignments that have included teaching at both the elementary and middle school levels, coaching teachers in effective reading strategies across the district, and serving as an assistant principal at the former Maxim Elementary School and as principal of the Benjamin A. Freeman Middle School. In two thousand eighteen, Kathy joined the central office leadership team as the Director of Student Services, Transportation, and Title IX Coordinator. Responsible for all the transportation needs in the district, addressing any student-parent concerns or issues, overseeing students' five oh four plans, attendance, discipline, coordinating district trainings, and much, much more are just some of the many hats that Kathy Perry has worn throughout her tenure and career in the Taunton Public Schools. As part of her role, she also collaborated with numerous community organizations, including the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club, and managed numerous staffing teams, including all pre-K through twelve guidance staff, community facilitators, and much, much more. Kathy received her bachelor's in early childhood education and a master's degree in consulting, teacher, and reading grades K through twelve from Bridgewater State University, and holds numerous professional certificates. Kathleen Perry will officially retire on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, and I do promise to have Kathy before the board in the very near future so we can all give her the farewell that she deservingly deserves. Last but not least, I don't have a write-up in my school committee report, but I will provide you with a quick update. This evening, you may have noticed that we have Principal Stephanie Hoy from Easttown Elementary School in the audience. Tonight, it is with great pleasure that I announce that the Easttown Elementary School Principal Stephanie Hoy has been appointed as the Taunton Public Schools' new Director of Student Services and Transportation. Congratulations, Stephanie. Not yet. Principal Hoy will assume the position on July one, following the retirement of our current director, Kathleen Perry. Principal Hoy has served as the principal of the Easttown Elementary School since March two thousand fifteen. Principal Hoy possesses the unique ability to make every student, staff member, and faculty member feel cared for, and continuously pushes everyone to reach the level of success she knows that they are capable of achieving. I am confident that the Director of Student Services and Transportation principal will continue to build relationships with all those in our community and further our district's opportunities for success for all community members. Principal Hoy joined the Taunton Public Schools in two thousand five as a guidance counselor at the Hopewell Elementary School, who was there that she served as a guidance counselor for ten years, and in two thousand twelve, she went on to become a teaching assistant principal at Hopewell. While serving as a teaching assistant principal, she was charged with supporting the building principal with all administrative duties and collaborated with community organizations and partners to support school initiatives. In two thousand fifteen, Principal Hoy was appointed as principal at the Easttown Elementary School. While at the Easttown Elementary School, she has been part of several district initiatives and a member of multiple community input teams to help support and develop plans for bettering the school community. In addition to serving on numerous CITs, she has also chaired multiple special education team meetings and many, many, many five oh four plan meetings. Prior to her work in the Taunton Public Schools, Hoy worked as an outpatient clinic director and community case manager at Corrigan Mental Health. Hoy received her bachelor's degree in psychology from Bridgewater State University and a master of social work from Simmons College. She holds numerous licenses in Massachusetts, including a Director's Pupil Personnel Student Services license, superintendent, assistant superintendent license, and many, many more. What I could best say to describe Principal Hoy is she has clearly demonstrated throughout her career at the Taunton Public Schools, the ability to learn and adapt and apply. So areas that she, that some may find as weaknesses or where she may lack experience, she has very, she has worked very hard to build knowledge and capacity, and I can say she's a true educational leader. And as you know, people who make up our leadership team, I like to describe our leadership team to use a sports analogy, we're all positionless players. We can all play multiple positions. We're like Swiss Army knives. We wear many hats, and we can carry on different roles throughout the school department. So I'm very excited to have Stephanie Hoy as our new Director of Student Services and Transportation. Welcome to the team, Stephanie.
Thank you, and thank you for those kind words. And they're talking to me, my uncle. I know I have a very, very huge development, and I'm looking forward to continuing to serve our students and staff and our families in a larger capacity. Thank you for Mr. and Mrs. by his side, my son and my daughter, and his community, and their calm, down stories of the news, please.
I'm sure.
Thank you.
She's not too late for us.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Laura?
Thank you. Is there any kind of certificate or any kind of thing you can give to this group that did so well at Gillette Stadium? Is there like a certificate of appreciation that we have issued in the past?
Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, last night, we had the opportunity to go before the city council. Of course, a few of us were able to come. Others had professional and family commitments that couldn't be there, and we were well-received by Mayor O'Connell and the entire city council. And of course, when we shine, we like to bring that to the entire city, and it was a perfect venue to do that. So the students presented each city council member with a shirt that we previously received as school committee members. So we continue to celebrate their success stories, and we will continue to celebrate them, other folks like DECA, other students that excel in academics, and everybody that we want to excel with, we will share in their, in their journey.
Thank you, Ms. Mallow. Yes, it was a nice evening. Sweet girl.
And also, those students noted in my superintendent's report were recognized and received certificates at the school committee recognition that evening last week.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, we move on to the budget presentation, preliminary budget presentation.
So as we're waiting for the projector to warm up, I noticed some of the board members identified that the packet was a little heavier than normal, and this is a very busy time of year. We have many initiatives going on throughout the school department, and we are approaching the final quarter of the school year. And we know budget season is, again, very busy. This is the first, I believe, four or five presentations, depending on the city council presentation in June, in which we will discuss our budget. So today, you will receive a high-level overview regarding our budget figures. Next Wednesday, we will have our budget workshop, where you'll receive the actual line item budget, and we'll really get into more detail regarding the figures and the numbers that you see in this presentation, how we came about developing these numbers. So I couldn't, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize and show appreciation to Assistant Superintendent Brenda Moynihan for her contribution, as well as Assistant Superintendent Chris Barad over his contribution, as well as the entire leadership team and our principals. So we did provide you with a table of contents. So if you do need to refer to certain slides in the presentation, feel free to utilize the table of contents. And something that I, that I've become more cognizant of, and something that I want to continue to bring awareness to the school committee and to the public, is who we are as a community. Taunton is a very, very proud community. It's in a community that was founded in sixteen thirty-seven. We are approaching nearly sixty thousand residents. We have a median household income based on the, I believe, the last census between two thousand sixteen, two thousand twenty, of sixty-three thousand. Our per capita income over twelve months is just under thirty-two thousand dollars. The median value for owner-occupied housing is approximately two hundred ninety-one thousand. The median monthly owner cost with mortgage is about eighteen hundred dollars, and the median monthly owner cost without a mortgage is seven hundred twenty dollars. The median gross rent, just over a thousand dollars. There are over twenty-four or over twenty languages spoken in our community. We do a very good job in Taunton as far as getting our students to graduate from high school. So of our residents, nearly eighty-five percent have a high school degree. Where we need to continue to do more work, and this is something that as a school department and as a resident in this community, now we need to do, continue to do more work regarding residents with a bachelor's degree or higher. We know, and research demonstrates, that the number one accumulation of the two leading factors in accumulating wealth in this country, education and homeownership. So I believe with a strong school system, you will see stronger businesses in our community, which will then help to lift our community. In two thousand eighteen nineteen, we graduated four hundred ninety-five students. Of the four hundred ninety-five students, three hundred and seventeen are attending college or university. Attending a private four-year college or university, twenty-seven percent. Attending a two-year public college or university, twenty-seven point eight percent. Attending public four-year, forty-four point eight percent, and attending a public two-year, twenty point five percent. As I mentioned, or I may have shared with the school board, one of our goals and one of our initiatives this year, and we'll talk about it later in this presentation, is to really have a robust early college program or partnership with local universities and junior colleges. And to date, I believe we have three articulation agreements, three articulation agreements in the work that I believe will help to increase these numbers that we, or these percentages that we currently see here, and again, help benefit our community. Our mission, I'll just let you read and digest. And I'm very proud of our strategic objectives, and you will see throughout the presentation that there will be references made to our strategic objectives. Strategic objective one, regarding curriculum, instruction, assessment, and planning. Objective two, professional culture and climate. Three, management, budget, and operations. And four, family engagement and community partnerships. In all our work, day in and day out, and you can ask my leadership team and our principals, we continuously or regularly refer to this document, because if it doesn't touch one of these four buckets, we are not going to do it, because this is what's driving the Taunton Public Schools now and for the next five years. Now, many of you have asked, and many of you who have seen or looked behind the curtain and wondered why we are receiving such a large influx of chapter seventy-four, chapter seventy cash. Well, one of the reasons has to do with what was forecasted pre-pandemic and post-pandemic. So tax collections and COVID, where we were one year ago. And if you notice, one year ago, the forecast was for a shortfall of three point eight eight billion dollars, almost four billion dollar shortfall. Fast forward to today, and we are showing a surplus of about one point five billion dollars more than what was expected. So that is one of the reasons, in addition to inflation and in addition to the Student Opportunity Act being funded, why, when we get into the meat, the nuts and bolts of this presentation, you will see the large influx of chapter seventy, chapter seventy funding to the Taunton Public Schools and the City of Taun. So I won't bore you with all the background and all the detail, but this provides you with a really good, concise snapshot of why our funding has increased on the education side of the house. So the governor's budget increases K-12 aid by almost five hundred million dollars. This increase represents the largest year-over-year increase in chapter seventy funding by two hundred million. The Student Opportunity Act, which you all helped to advocate for several years ago, the governor's budget implements one-sixth of the full student opportunity rates. This will allow the state to keep pace to fully fund the Student Opportunity Act by two thousand twenty-seven. It also implements, and we'll see how Taunton Public Schools benefited, good and bad, because it helps to address a need. We have a lot of families that are either working poor or poor that are struggling in our community, and it's reflected in our chapter seventy budget. Other notable elements key to funding into chapter seventy, inflation. By statute, the highest that the governor can go with inflation is four and a half percent. True inflation, if it were to be factored in, would be about five point nine percent. And enrollment continues to be on a decline, which is down across the state by about thirty or almost thirty-eight hundred kids, but we are seeing the Taunton Public Schools get to the level of where we were pre-pandemic. And I'll, again, you can review this if you're really interested in learning why the funding is at the rate that you're going to see later in this presentation. And at this time, I'll turn things over to Assistant Superintendent Brenda Moynihan.
So the FY twenty-three budget timeline, it does show, the first bucket shows that it started out in January with a govern, with the governor's budget. But honestly, in the district, we started doing the budget process way back in October, where our principals were challenged to talk to all of their stakeholders, their teachers, their PTOs, to figure out what is needed to drive their school budget for the next school year. So in January, the governor's budget was presented to the state, and what, of course, we're looking at is the chapter seventy funding. So in last year, in the FY twenty-two, the governor's budget went, gave us, or the Taunton Public School District, sixty-eight point eight million dollars. This year, January twenty-sixth of two thousand twenty-two, for the next year's of chapter seventy, we have now have seventy-eight point six million dollars, which is a difference of nine point seven million dollars in chapter funding. So again, the aid has increased nine point seven million dollars over the year prior. So right now, we are going into the House budget, which we believe will be released next week, and at that time, what happens is when we go be released next week. And at that time, what happens is, when we go into the House budget and then into the Senate budget in May, you will see that this chapter 70 number will increase or decrease. But usually, the history shows that this number usually increases, the chapter 70 number increases, going through the House and then the Senate. And then again, what happens next, it goes into the conference committee budget in June of 2022. Veto's happen again in that month, overrides Ed's well, and then hopefully, a successful final budget in June 2022, where we will begin our fiscal year in July. So looking at the chapter 70 summary, how does it come about? Well, our enrollment, we look at our enrollment, and yes, in FY22, which is of course last year, we had students of 7,900 students in our district. Coming up for the next fiscal year, which is what we called October 1 report, which is our numbers, our snapshot of our enrollment numbers of October 1, 2021, we have an enrollment of 7,940 students. That does show a decrease of 13 students. But as we see going forward, and we do produce additional reports to the Department of Ed of seeing the numbers increasing, we do supply them with our SIMS data, that it's called, in March and then in June, and we are seeing our numbers increase. We're looking at the foundation budget. Again, it is a change of $11 million. It's 118,000, excuse me, 118,729,148. Well, what does that encompass? That full foundation budget comes from two pockets of money, those next two lines. Required district contribution of the, and that is local share, that we call it, and that's $40 million. Then you add the chapter 70 aid, again, that's state aid, of $78.6 million, where you get that foundation budget, or required net school spending, of 118,729,148. Again, biggest thing, again, we're looking at is that chapter 70 increase, as I stated in the previous slide, of $9.7 million increase for the next school year. So here are the funded components of the chapter 70. Again, this is a big, huge chart, but I just am going to try to show you a few numbers where it will help you. As you see, there are enrollment. So there are 14 columns going across, as we see, and those are where we get our numbers from. So our enrollment currently, as you see at the very end of the column there, we have a total of enrollment of 7,940 students, 7,940 students. You take that amount of students, and then it kind of goes about with all of these different factors. You see, oops, I apologize. You see the number here of our preschool students of enrollment, and then you see our enrollments of full-day kindergarten, and then our elementary numbers. These, all of these numbers here will equal out to be our total enrollment of $7,940. I'm sorry, I said seven, I apologize. 7,940 students in our district. With all of these factors down below, this is how, taking these numbers up here, and you multiply them, and again, this is very quickly, I do not need to give you a math lesson, these are how we go ahead and make the totals that comes all the way down here to our foundation budget. Again, our foundation budget is 118,729,148. You take that foundation budget, divide that with our total enrollment of 7,900 students, and that's where you see where we get the foundation enrollment budget per pupil of $14,953. Another key item that you need to look at too, is over here to the left corner, and that is showing is our low-income percentage. Right now, we have, for the next school year, it's showing that we have 62.88% low income of our student population. Where does this number come from? It definitely comes from the state, which is direct certifications of need, financial need. And that, because of that number, it shows that we are now in the 10th decile for low income. And I'm going to present to Mr. Cabral to continue.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Moynihan. So something that I believe every time we talk about net school spending, it doesn't get clear, it just gets a little clearer. So the more we hear about it, the more we learn about net school spending, I believe, the better we can, we better, we understand net school spending. So required net school spending, the 118 million that Assistant Superintendent Moynihan referenced, that's not the amount of money that the city gives to the school department. That net school spending amount consists of the appropriation, as well as the indirect costs. Indirect costs are the many services that the city provides to the school department. Indirect costs consist of the building department, the maintenance that perform in our buildings, the treasurer's office, helping to process vouchers, the auditor's office, the, as far as auditing the vouchers and making sure that all our payments are done correctly. So the state share, and that 118 million dollar figure, I know I've asked this question, how does the state figure that out? That is a combination of the wealth, the home values in the community, as well as the earning income of our residents. And there are, it's about a 50-50 split between the property value and the income of our residents. So obviously, the higher the home value, and the more that our residents are earning, you may see the required net school spending figure go up, but it also has a negative impact on the amount of aid that we receive, because it demonstrates that the city has a higher ability to contribute on the local share. So how did we see, or why did we see such a large increase? You'll see to the left, on the preschool, we saw a $440,000 increase. Full-day kindergarten, which is something that we committed to many years ago, to have full-day kindergarten for our students versus half-day, 876,000. Elementary increased by 726,000. Junior and middle school, and that junior and middle school number does include the eighth graders at Taunton High School. They are factored into the junior and middle school, not the high school total. So the junior and middle school increased by 500,000. Our high school funding increased by 425,000. Vocational, our chapter 74 programs, which we've been celebrating, that provides additional revenue to the Taunton Public Schools' operational budget to the amount of $1.3 million. Special education increased by 421,000. That was special education in district. Special education out of district increased by 156. EL population for elementary, middle, and high school had modest increases of approximately 129,000, 14,000, and 91,000. The largest contributing factor to, in addition to the SOA, to our chapter 70 increase, was our low income. There are 12 deciles for low income, and we are in the 10th decile, with about 60%. That's like saying six out of 10 students qualify for free reduced lunch. Again, six out of 10. So we see a $6.6 million increase in our chapter 70 funding, or in the required net school spending formula, because of our low-income numbers in the district. And as Mrs. Moynihan, Assistant Superintendent articulated very well, that is done through direct certifications, and then there's a multiplier or a factor that the state applies, where we get to the numbers that she demonstrated on this slide. So 4,847 students, and you see that number of, I believe it's 28 million, the eyes don't work as well as they used to, is what we're receiving for low income. And this is just a slide that I think helps to demonstrate the process that we follow, as Mrs. Moynihan mentioned, where we follow the budget. So you get a snapshot of where we were for fiscal '22, you see where we are with fiscal '23 and the release of the governor's budget, and we are eagerly awaiting the House Ways and Means release of their budget, and then we know Senate Ways and Means will release their budget sometime in May. Under the governor's budget, we are expecting an increase of 9.7 million, and then also a charter school reimbursement of just about $23,000. And how did we come, or how do we come about determining what we can expect or what we are asking or requesting on the local side for an appropriation that we believe is fair? So the required net school spending, again, is 118 million, just shy, or just under 119 million. Eligible indirect costs, minus transportation and crossing guards. So this figure is actually closer to 26 million, but transportation and crossing guards are not eligible. So you back out the transportation and crossing guards, and that gives you indirect costs that are eligible of about 16 and a half million dollars. When you back out the 16 and a half from the 118, for the requirement to be at 100%, and again, 100% is what we are asking for, and 100% is what the city has honored since I've been the assistant superintendent and superintendent, because we know that the city has needs above and beyond the school department. So we try to be good neighbors, and we try to be good partners, understanding that the city has other needs on the municipal side. So what we believe is a fair request is the previous year's appropriation of $92,837,637. The chapter 70 increase, which comes in the form of aid, which we articulated here, that's where that number comes from, plus the charter school reimbursement, and that would provide us with an appropriation of about $102,592,554. This is just a history to demonstrate that the city has met its requirement. And unfortunately, there are municipalities in the Commonwealth that are not meeting their requirement, that struggle to meet the requirement, and that has not been the case under the mayor's leadership and under the previous administration. They have honored and met their requirement. This provides you with a history of all the urban schools and how they fare when it comes to net school spending. The red line indicates 100%, which is the law, and where I like to pay attention to is the trend line. Our school systems, the blue line is fiscal '23, the orange line is fiscal '22. And we want to, what we want to see is that blue line for fiscal '23 ahead of the red line, which shows that municipalities, again, these are all urbans, and different factors, and not every urban compares favorably to the Taunton Public Schools. For example, I would not compare the Taunton Public Schools, you know, to Cambridge or to Quincy, which has, or Waltham, which have been, who are listed as urbans, because we know property value and earning income in those communities are vastly different than here in the Taunton Public Schools, and here in southeastern Massachusetts, just because of their proximity to Boston. But I am proud to state that the city is meeting, or the local is meeting their requirement of 100% or higher. This is just a history, is this you, Mrs. Moynihan? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm stealing Mrs. Moynihan's thunder.
That's okay. So here in front of you, the slide is basically just showing the history of the chapter 70 aid and that local contribution profile. So it started, a snapshot is showing from the FY15 and then all the way through the FY23. I don't really want to look at the previous years, like the FY21, where we had COVID, and it was, where we suffered quite a bit of cuts. But what is, we can just see is, what do these numbers look like? So let's look at the FY23, which is the budget that we are currently getting ready to forecast for you. Again, local contribution, local appropriation is the 102, 102,592,554. So you take that number, you total, that is the total between the chapter 78 of 78.6 million, so you take that, plus the local contribution of 23,964. Those two buckets equals the entire appropriation. So there's two buckets, state and local contribution. So let's look at trends as we go ahead and look at the trends here in percentage-wise. Beginning in FY15, we saw that this percentage of our appropriation, 68.7% of the appropriation came from the state. And as you see going year to year, the state continues to provide increases in local aid, that chapter 70. Local contribution, beginning in FY15, you started seeing at 31%. Local contribution from year to year has seen a slow decrease, which currently is at 23% of the total contribution. So in other words, in simple terms, for every dollar, again, looking at this year, FY23, for every dollar spent on education, 76 cents to every dollar comes from the state aid, and 23 cents for every dollar that is spent on education comes from local contribution. So where are we now? FY23 proposed expenditures, that line item budget that Superintendent Cabral referred to earlier, that we will present to the school committee in our budget workshop next week, those proposed expenditures equal out to be 103,342,554. Again, earlier, Superintendent Cabral said our city appropriation is 102,592,554. So you see a little bit, where is that, that difference coming from? Well, this is my fourth budget that I'm presenting here, and in FY23, we have to add some of our revenue. And I am happy to announce, and I'm sure superintendent's happy to announce, that we don't really have to tap in to our additional revenue sources that we usually do in the past, like our revolving. So to make up that difference, we need to use our revenue. So right now, here, for the circuit break at transportation, in the, it's about $500,000. Now again, that's a conservative number, and we like to be conservative, well, I do especially, because you just don't know. But again, we are aiming to probably get a little bit more than that, because that's about 50% of, some type of, 50% eligible costs that come back to our district. $100,000 that we receive from the cable commission, and then another conservative number that we receive from McKinney-Vento, which is our homeless population, is about 150,000. With those three buckets of revenue of the $750,000, you add that 750 to the 102 million, we have a balanced budget of $103,342,554. So here's our costs of, where are we using the money for the next school year? Here are our buckets, here are our buckets. The first one, salary. Last year, or this current school year, our salaries are about $72.5 million. Forecasting for the next school year is $79.1 million. We see an increase of $6.6 million, which is an increase of a 9% in our budget. Please know that our teachers and staff are not receiving a 9% increase or a raise. Those numbers include many factors. One, our step and track increase, and also, we need to think about too, we have five unions that will be going into negotiation. And also, we have new positions that are currently being funded by ESAR, our grant, that we are going to move into our budget. So now, again, that moving into our budget is in align with our Student Opportunity Act plan. So again, that is the reason why we're seeing an increase of 9%. Special education, between the two factors there, we're seeing a decrease in $2.8 million. Why is that? We're using our revenue and removing it, or excuse me, and we are charging our revenue and paying for our tuition ahead of time. So that way, we will see that we have to budget $2.8 million less than we would in the past. Transportation, we're seeing that transportation is a difference of 5.6%, an increase of almost $500,000. Where is that number coming from? Well, our inflation rate, or our COLA, is, like Superintendent Cabral said, is at our max, a 4.5%. In addition, I added, or we added, a 1% increase for the fuel escalation. We just don't know where we're going to go with that fuel. So we just want to make sure that we're budgeting enough and padding that line correctly. Utilities, again, looking at our, using that COLA and looking at what we've spent in the past, we have a slow increase of 3.17%. Our contracted services is, it may look like it's huge, at 7%, but if you look at it, it's only $133,000 more. Our supplies, a difference between the two years of this current school year to the next school year is an increase of $760,000, almost a 57% increase. Reason being is we are trying to go ahead and align all of those supply lines to pre-pandemic monies. So again, before, we had to zero them out or use ESAR, now we're bringing them back into the budget using our pre-pandemic numbers. And our maintenance is an increase of $102,000, or 20, almost a 23% increase. That is helping maintain our buildings with our city building department, who helps us service our buildings to keep them perfectly fine for our students and staff. So again, our increase for this current year, or upcoming year, we see our budget increase of 5.46%. Looking at a snapshot of the expenditures growth from FY to 2015 to the current FY, or for the next school year of FY23, you see our numbers increase from increased from, beginning in two thousand and fifteen, our expenditures, or our budget, was about seventy-five point eight million dollars. Going forecasting to the next school year, as we see, it's a hundred and three million dollars. Now again, looking at the previous years, and we're looking at our percentages, yes, of course, this FY twenty-one, that was our COVID year. So that's one that's a little bit more difficult to really, we just want to forget about it. But if you look at the previous years, it looks like we have an increase of five percent. And again, aligning for FY twenty-three looks like that the expenditures are just on line of what we have been doing in the past. And I'm gonna turn it over to Superintendent Cabral.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Moynihan. So this slide may look familiar. This is the, the pie chart, the infamous pie chart, that kind of analyzes all, uh, total city expenditures. You'll see that education makes up the largest piece of the pie. The education, it should be noted, also, of that ninety-three million dollars identified in the blue section, that also represents spending for Bristol Plymouth, as well as Bristol Aggie. And I also provided you with the percentage and snapshot of each department on the, on the government side. So we see where all the funding, or how that two hundred and ten million dollars on the expenditure side is allocated and broken down across all departments. It also should be noted that the school department is the largest employer on the city side. I believe we employ approximately thirteen hundred employees on the school side. And the forty-four point five nine percent, again, that also does encompass Bristol Aggie and Bristol Plymouth. Uh, this is, this is a slide that really, I like to say demonstrates and provides to the school committee, provides to our partners on the city, and also to the taxpayers, that we have some of the lowest per pupil costs across the state. Our per pupil admin cost, you'll see the low is two seventy-five point seven. You'll see the low is Taunton, two seventy-five point six eight. If you notice, the instructional leadership cost is seven hundred and ninety-one dollars per student, the low on the state is seven hundred and seventy-seven. I believe we are fourth when it comes to instructional leadership. When it comes to teachers, uh, you'll see that we fare a lot better when it comes to teachers. The state low, or the state average, is about forty-five, forty-eight hundred dollars. Taunton is about a thousand dollars higher. So even though people may believe, or some may think, that we have no more than enough administrators, we may be called top-heavy, I would beg to differ, because it's been a history, what, during my leadership and previous superintendents, that we believe in putting the resources in the classrooms, where we see the biggest impact or the biggest value for our dollars, in impacting student learning, in supporting students' social and emotional and mental health. So you can go through this slide, identify what Taunton is, and compare us to the minimum and compare us to the max. So again, I feel we provide the community, we provide our parents. I don't need to remind you that I have two students at the high school who are thriving. There, I believe, we provide great value to the citizens in the top public schools with the support of our city partners. The Student Opportunity Act, um, I'm sorry, this is so wordy, but I think this is important. And when I was going through this exercise with the leadership team, there was a lot of pride during conversation, because the Student Opportunity Act was approved several years ago. And you'll notice, when we go through this real quickly, there is strategic alignment to the four evidence-based domains that the state identified, and we identified, approved by the state and approved by the school committee. So these are four evidence-based domains. Social-emotional learning was the first domain that we adopted under our Student Opportunity Act. Our plan was to adopt a comprehensive pre-K through twelve social-emotional program to support students' social, emotional, and physical health. That touches on strategic plan priority one and two, the status completed and ongoing. Evidence, we have purchased and implemented a social-emotional learning curriculum. And two, we have hired six team chairs that allows our guidance counselors to be guidance counselors and to provide support to our students. Ongoing, in the future, a community input team, which many of you serve on or will serve on, was formed in two thousand and twenty to examine the therapeutic learning programs and to explore new programming models reconvening in the near future. This will be one of the major tasks, or one of the first tasks, that Director of Transportation Student Services, Stephanie Hoy, will be overtaking or taking on as she transitions into a new role. To reduce class size, that was strategic priority or evidence-based priority number two. Continue to hire personnel to reduce class sizes that will best support, improve student performance, and will diversa, and will diversify our educator workforce. So that touches on strategic priorities one, two, and three, and this work is ongoing. I provide you with a snapshot of our student enrollment. Now you may think point five of a student is not a big difference, but we have eight thousand students, thirteen hundred classrooms. And we are, which we'll talk about in a little bit, we are looking at a new high school schedule, which I believe will further reduce the class sizes in top public schools. Early college pathways, again, create an early college pathway program for high school students that will best prepare them for post-secondary pursuits, while also strengthening college and career readiness. Emphasis will be placed on students underrepresented in higher education. This touches upon strategic priority one and four. This work is partially completed and ongoing. We have early college agreements with several area colleges. We have innovative pathways created in the following areas at Taunton High School, healthcare, and information technology. And one of our objectives under the Student Opportunity Act was to hire a career vocational technical education, early college pathway internship coordinator. This work is currently being done by task, through a grant that we have, or by task which we are funding through ESER. Last but not least, expand access to full-day, high-quality pre-kindergarten classes for four-year-olds alongside a robust early literacy curriculum for grades pre-K to six at all our elementary schools. And this touches upon all four strategic priorities. This work continues to be ongoing. To date, we have expanded our pre-K program by four classrooms, and under the leadership of curric, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction Christopher Barata and Becky Coet, and our curriculum experts, we have Sarah Buckley as well, we have adopted and implemented the One Day Study Sync ELA curriculum, uh, pre-K through twelve. And in process, we are looking at expanding pre-K at the Chamberlain Elementary School, East Taunton Elementary School, and hopefully someday in the future, E-Pole Elementary School as well. And just to remind you of where we are, we are entering year two of our ESER plan. So year one, these were the positions that we funded, that were approved by the school committee during the FY twenty-two budget process. During that plan, that planning phase for year one, we allocated almost seven point six million dollars of our ESER dollars to fund these positions. The positions involved with the star are positions that we will share with you next Wednesday, that we have, have moved over to the appropriation, or onto our appropriation. So they will no longer be grant-funded. Under ESER plan year two, and again, this will be the discussion that we will have on Wednesday, do we modify year two, or do we proceed with year two? And again, I've identified positions and the, and the cost that we anticipate year two will cost us. And then next year, and hopefully we won't need this, uh, for fiscal twenty-four, we did have part of our spending plan, five hundred thousand dollars for pool testing as part of our COVID nineteen, uh, mitigation strategy. My favorite slide, and this is, I feel like we should just do my end-of-the-year evaluation now, and the leadership team's evaluation, because this is all the work that we have done, uh, this year. This is all work this year, uh, as we come out of the pandemic. And one of the things that I take great pride in, and the team will tell you, they are tired, uh, because we have been pushing through this pandemic. While many communities continue to focus, or be hyper-focused on the pandemic, we shifted our focus to accelerated learning, getting our kids back on track. So for strategic objective number one, we implemented a writing curriculum called ACES. We approved, finally, my strategic plan. We are expanding pre-K. We adopted illustrative math. We have early college pu, agreements, articulation agreements. Open SAEED is being piloted. We're looking at a new high school schedule. Early Bird, I believe, works with our L population, as does Elevation. And we also have partnered with Curriculum Matters, which many of you attended a luncheon with that think-tank group, to talk about the innovative work taking place in our school system. Strategic priority two, we have a robust instructional leadership team. We adopted the Mind Up curriculum. We have early, we have developed a summer internship program targeting diverse student populations to become the next generation workforce for the top public schools. And here you see our students who attended a DESSI-sponsored webinar on becoming future educators. We have a professional development plan that Mr. Barato and I are working on, that we are looking to launch this year and into next year. And we also have partnered with Schoolworks, where they provide assessments of our schools' climate, culture, and impact on learning. And the reports have been very positive thus far. Strategic objective number three, Kathleen Callahan, Kathleen Perry, our Director of Transportation Student Services, she has updated our emergency preparedness plans for the entire top public schools. So that'll be done, and that has been updated to meet the new needs of the twenty-first During the end-of-the-year reporting, we once again identified where, where it was noted that there were zero findings in the end-of-the-year report. This committee, uh, and we do have the bid that is out, and we will open the bid on April twenty-seventh for a new turf field and new track, which is two million dollars that this committee has allocated out of revolving. And last but not least, Mrs. Moynihan, or Assistant Superintendent Moynihan, has updated the capital improvement plan, which will be shared with the city. Our partnerships, which I'm very proud of, Bristol County Savings Bank, the new teacher partnership, CPAC, our SSOS statewide systemic support team, Manit Health, which we are looking to partner a student-based health center, CCB, CCBC, which provides counseling to our students, Confianza, which works with the Leila Mendoza, our EL director, to make sure that we have the best practices and the best supports for our students in our L population. We have the Family Welcome Center, which has undergone a facelift and is more school-based versus welcome center-based. And I'm very proud of the work taking place, uh, through junior achievement in our middle schools and high schools. So I apologize to go into such great length and detail regarding the presentation, but at this point, no action needs to be taken. The real action will be taken on Wednesday, when we gather to do our budget workshop, and we continue to have conversations with the city regarding what we feel is a fair appropriation that benefits the school department and also recognizes that there are many needs on the city side as well. So with that, that concludes our preliminary budget presentation. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to entertain the questions at this time.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Cabral and Moynihan. Okay. Does anyone have any questions? And if not, right, yeah, we don't want to have the same conversation two weeks in a row, but certainly entertain any.
Extremely thorough, though, I must say. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so I just want the members that weren't here a couple of years ago and the public at home to know that, um, we were sitting here, uh, around this, uh, what do you call this, hectagon or whatever it's called, uh, faced with over six million dollar budget cuts. And, um, we have, we reduced the six million to, I think, three point some odd million. And there were a lot of phone calls, emails, uh, from the folks at home, why are we cutting library assistants, why are we cutting coaches, why are we cutting this, why are we cutting that? So we were faced with many tough decisions. So as, as just was presented now, uh, for the folks that are able to view this, uh, we've come a long way. And we're still on our way to get even better and full bodies in place to assist our students. And there are so many needs that have now come about since the pandemic, and we continue to do that in a very, very positive effect. And for, just for now, I just want to thank the Assistant Superintendent and the Superintendent for the presentation. There'll be more to come, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. D'Amelio. And the city certainly appreciates being a collaborative partner with the school to provide the best education possible and services for our children. All right, then we can move on to administrative business. Staffing report.
Received and placed on file.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. And there's a field trip request?
Mayor, if I may, uh, we were already presented with the request for the approval of field trip, and this concerns the DECA students, one of them, uh, which is competing in Atlanta. And, um, I guess a motion would be in order to approve this request, and of course, sign, and they can go on their way on April twenty-second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted.
And I believe there's a sec, is there a second one, uh, Mr. Cabral, for Washington, DC?
Not yet.
Oh, not yet, okay, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Subcommittee reports. Finance and Law Subcommittee, Mr. Fiore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Finance and Law Subcommittee met this evening at five forty-five with myself, Mr. D'Amelio, and Mr. Enos. Our first item on the agenda, we approved replenishing the student activities account for Taunton High School in the amount of fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-four cents. We received a use of facilities report, which is in your packet. Again, no real approvals required, we just received it and placed it on file. Then we were presented with a warrant for bills payable for fiscal year twenty-two, amount of one million one hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-three cents. The committee recommended approval. I need to be recorded as present on the items regarding the Old Colony History Museum, because I'm an officer of that society. And finally, we received a facilities update. The, um, alternative high school program, the project is nearly complete. There were some issues with the installation of the doors, which they are in the process of correcting, but they expect that by the end of April, that, uh, there won't be any more construction workers on site, and that the program will be able to move back from Hopewell School at any time. And then, uh, finally, I also report that even though, uh, a lot of the mask mandates and so forth have been lifted, the custodial staff is still, uh, involved intensely in sanitizing of facilities and, and, uh, using the sanitation equipment that was purchased specifically for COVID. And then the committee adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Fiore. Is there a motion to receive and accept the recommendations?
Motion to receive the, placed on file.
Second.
And accept the recommendations?
Accept the recommendations of the committee.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Next is Rules Subcommittee, Mr. Enos.
Uh, yes, we had our first Rules Subcommittee meeting, as far as me, anyway. And just bear with me, since, because I'm kind of new at this, uh, we did have three items on the agenda. The first one was, um, the project that we've been working on for a little bit of time now for P-cards for the, um, school committee, for the school department, as well as the rest of the city. And the first step in that was developing a policy of use. And, um, with the school department working in conjunction with the city, um, we're securing a program with the Bank America Procurement Card for use for school-related expenses, including travel, conference registrations, et cetera. The policy does outline what the P-cards can be used for and items that cannot be purchased. Uh, we added some additional language, um, as far as no cash advances, um, uh, timing on billing and payment, and things like that. We, uh, there was a recommendation by, uh, Mr. Fiore regarding, um, a term of traveling related to, um, not just airline, but possible, um, travel by other means, such as trains or buses or whatever, um, and things like that. And I believe, uh, Mr. D'Amelio mentioned something about, um, I forget the, uh, rideshare was another one. So we added that to the, um, language as well. And because this, we're all pretty much in agreement on this policy, and they have many organizations, trips coming up soon, we, um... up soon, we waived the three readings and with approval by the committee tonight. The second one, which was...
One moment, Mr. Enos, Mr. DeMello.
So since we have just covered that first topic on the Subcommittee, I think a motion would be in order to waive the readings, the three readings, in order to move that forward.
To eliminate the fee.
And accept, and accept the recommendations of the Subcommittee.
So...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
The second item was an internet network acceptable use policy that was presented by the administration of the school department. We discussed the use of cell phones by the students, developing a plan which was presented, appropriate use of cell phones, particularly photographing, video recording students, of different activities that may happen during the course of the school day. It went on where the committee addressed the concerns and agreed with the recommendation by the administration, and also waived the three readings on this as well. So there may be a spot to...
Another vote required to waive the three readings? Can we get a motion on that, please?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the three readings and accept and adopt the recommendation of the Rules Subcommittee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. On discussion, Mr. Fiore.
Point of view, Madam Mayor, actually, for this one and the previous one, I think in order for the waiver of the readings, we do need to proceed on a roll call vote because if we were doing the final adoption on three readings, it would have required a roll call. So I think we need to do a roll call on these two.
Okay, so why don't we do the roll call on this one right now and then we'll go and reconsider the other one?
This is on the second one, right?
Yes.
And then you want me to do the first one?
The internet network.
Okay. Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes, I'm sorry, Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes, yes. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Laura?
Yes.
And Chairman DeMello?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Okay, so can we have another motion on the previous one?
I move that we proceed on a roll call to adopt the PCOD policy.
Motion and, second, motion made and seconded on a roll call, please.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes, yes. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Laura?
Yes.
Chairman DeMello?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Does that require another motion now since we had to do the roll call on that?
I believe that covered what we needed to do.
The motion was in order, it's just the way we voted on it as well.
Right. Okay. Okay, so are you all set?
I have one more. Just one more we discussed with Mrs. Moynihan for special ed about establishing a new position Director of School Counseling in Social, Emotional Learning Job Description that was presented. It was discussed by the committee and we did approve it and we want to adopt it into the first reading.
Okay, is there a motion on that?
Motion to accept.
Second. Motion made and seconded on first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed. Motion passes.
That's all I have.
Okay. So considering we just made those three votes, do we still need to accept and adopt the recommendations of the committee generally? Okay, okay, great. Unit A, Teachers Subcommittee, Mrs. Fagan.
Yeah, Teachers Subcommittee met with the teachers on March 21st, and we have tentatively agreed, but we're going to go talk about this in executive session with the rest of the committee later this evening.
Okay.
That's the report. We have an agreement, but it's got to be discussed with all of you in executive session, is what I'm saying.
So are we accepting the recommendation report now or would you do that after?
Just accept the report.
Accept the report. Okay, so can we get a motion to accept?
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so voted. And then we have Secretaries and Assistants, Mr. Fiore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Secretaries and Assistants Committee met in negotiating session with the union on Wednesday, March 23rd. At 4:30, we discussed ground rules for negotiation and scheduling of future meetings, and negotiations are ongoing.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to...
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so voted. New business, preschool expansion, full-day program for four-year-olds. Mr. Superintendent Cabral.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the new business, you'll see that we listed a pre-K expansion. So part of our ongoing pre-K expansion efforts, I would like to explore the feasibility and engage the committee in discussing offering full pre-K for our four-year-olds in the Taunton Public Schools. And I believe this matter, if it's something that the committee wishes to discuss, would best be referred to the elementary Subcommittee first, where we can explore and discuss at that level and then bring it back to the full committee. Once you have raised all your questions, all your concerns, and the administration has done their due diligence, we can make a formal presentation and then assess or gauge the committee on whether or not they want to or wish to pursue this after we've done our due diligence.
Is there a motion for my colleagues to refer to the elementary Subcommittee?
Motion to refer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Unanimous. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Unfinished business. Any action on the action item review?
Nothing at this time, ma'am.
Okay. And then we have executive session, Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Mayor. I would request a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Taunton Education Association and non-union personnel seeking recognition pursuant to exemptions three, Massachusetts General Laws 30A, Section 29A3, and we will reconvene in open session. Motion to be adjourned.
Motion to go on executive session.
Motion made and seconded. I believe, is that a roll call?
Roll call.
Yes. On discussion, Mr. Fiore.
Before we go and vote, disclosure, my wife is a member of this union, but this matter does not impact her, so I will participate.
Thank you. So motion and second on a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes, yes. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Laura?
Yes.
And Chairman DeMello?
Yes, and we will come back in open session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. A motion would be in order to come out of executive session.
Roll call.
On a roll call vote.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Fagan, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes, yes. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Laura?
Yes.
Chairman DeMello?
Yes. And do we have a report out? Mr. Viera, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to record the votes taken in executive session.
Second.
Is there a second? Mr. Enos, seconded. All in favor on a roll call vote? No need a roll call vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Unanimous, yays. Yays have it.
Okay.
Mrs. Fagan.
Okay, so the committee approved the motion for the BCBAs to voluntarily unionize, and that was a unanimous vote by the school committee.
Is that in the form of a motion?
That's the first order from...
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Motion so moved.
All in favor on a roll call vote?
We've already done this.
We've already done this? Okay.
We've done it, Vegas, by what he said.
The motion to record the votes taken in the executive session.
Okay, and?
That takes care of it all. I don't think any vote that was taken, that took care of it.
Good. Are we good, Superintendent?
Okay, one other thing to report. The TEA discussion was for informational purposes only. No vote was taken because none was needed.
Very good. So I guess that's it for tonight. But I do have one closing comment. We have nothing else on the agenda, but it did come under new business because it was in our folder. Just to remind everybody that the Wizard of Oz is happening this weekend, Friday, Saturday night, and Sunday afternoon. I'll be at the Saturday performance with a bunch of great nieces and nephews, so I can't wait. A motion would be in order to...
Adjourn.
Adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Have a good night. Thank you so much, everyone.
Mr. Viera?
See you soon.